Ryan to find out, Wendy's got me penciled in. I'm working on getting-
Now that the one man stage-
Now that the pre-show is over, I'm gonna call this meeting a regular meeting to order.
He was on fire.
Yeah, that's why I'm calling it order. You could all please rise and join me in saluting the flag. Ready to begin?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember the city of Costa Mesa, city engineer Fabria Mazelli, who recently lost her courageous battle with cancer. Thank you.
She was young.
That's a tough loss for the city.
Mark.
Okay, Madam President, the roll call.
Director James Thurman.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer is currently supplemental at a CCA conference. Secretary Robert Uden.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, any ceremonial matters or presentations?
No, Mr. President.
Any late communications?
No, Mr. President.
Then we'll move to public comments, the time set aside for persons to speak on items within our subject matter that are not listed on the agenda. Mr. Moser, you've indicated a desire to speak.
Yes, thank you. Members to the board, my name is Jim Moser. The non-agenda comment I wanted to make is, as you may recall, the last item on your January agenda was the district council presenting to you the petition for review by the state water board of the penalties that have been assessed against the district in connection with the sewer spills a couple of years ago. And the report for that said that the regional board had three days to possibly file an opposition to that. So I am curious to ask, the board is curious whether the district was aware of an opposition having been filed, and if so, where the public could look at what the arguments are.
Thank you. Scott, may I refer to the district council?
Well, we just received a letter from the state water board telling us what the status of it is. We don't have an opposition yet, if we will get one. It lays out certain options, depending on if they respond or choose not to respond. There's a few different things that can happen. One of them is nobody responds and they do not act on it. In this case, we'd have to file in court in ninety days. So we do not have anything filed that we're aware of at this point. We just got the notice from the state board and we're monitoring.
Second part of the question, because of the potential for litigation, that's why we don't post it, we can't post it or do anything in public?
Well, if it was a formal response by a party or anything like that, it would be public.
Okay.
So we would have no problem with that. We just wouldn't want to give away anything that was still a work product as we were developing it. But as we file documents, those will be public and their responses will be public too.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak? I see no one else. We'll move to the consent calendar. Mr. Moser's indicated that he'd like to speak on items six and seven. So we'll pull from the consent calendar items six and seven. Any other items to be pulled? Now, entertain a motion to exempt without six and seven?
With approval except for six and seven.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Whoa, sorry. That motion passed unanimously with one director absent. Item six, payroll transparency disclosure.
Mr. Moser? Thank you again, President Schaefer. I should perhaps make more clear on my comment request, but I didn't really need for you to pull the items. I just had suggestions for their better presentation to the public on future agendas. Item number six is a, called the payroll transparency disclosure, which the board is being asked to approve. And it's very commendable, a supplement to the warrant resolution that all the checks pay. And it's disclosing things that are not on the warrant resolution that have to do with payroll. However, my suggestion is this really, if the public doesn't understand at all what you're approving, it really needs a little cover memo and a little reader's guide so somebody knows what these pages mean. I myself even had to look up the GL distribution names. It says it has to be payroll. GL stands for general measure. There are six tables with totals at the bottom, but they're not labeled as to what they mean. So it's commendable to be doing it, but in its present state, without a little reader's guide, that's not very useful. And then the-
If I may?
Yes.
You know, I think it's an error that it's actually supposed to be a receivable file, not an approvable file. And staff is trying to provide the supplemental information to the warrant registers without having to create the additional work. So that's the reason for doing this, that instead of doing a whole report to tie it in, the board did not request to create a work product just to provide existing work products.
Yeah, I assume the same six tables will appear each month, and it would be helpful to know what the six tables represent.
Six tables?
They're a list of debits, and then at the bottom of them, it says total, report total. So you have six reports, but it doesn't identify what is being reported on any of them.
Okay, okay. Just for explanation, each report is the summary of the total expenses for that warrant run. So when we give you a warrant run for the AP, it's for the entire month, and it's supposed by check number and ACH. This is actually a, each summary page, like page two on this where my initials show up, and then page three, those are each separate warrant runs that would be a payroll in and of themselves. So there's actually, I think this one has, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven payrolls in this month that were presented for the board.
I have a question. When you first started, they's not going to be in approval in the future?
You know, the board has approved the budget and positions, and so I don't know that, I mean, we're not holding, this is not ratification. They have, you know, already directed the payment of payroll. And so I don't know, we've never approved payroll in the past. It's just supplementary information to-
Yeah, that's what I thought, because I don't think-
It's more for transparency purposes.
Right. I mean, but if we're going to continue to do this, Mr. Moser has a good point, we should have a little explanation, you know, clarifying what exactly they are. You know, if we do this in the future.
Well, we're, every month for clarification, but if the board directs us to do a stack report, I can do it.
Essentially, the, when I look at this, my explanation is based on the description that you give. Like, I can see when someone gets a cell phone allowance or a deferred comp, I mean, to me, that tells me what that warrant is for. So I don't know if we need, I'm not sure we need to do any more explanation. I mean, I agree that if we have something like a G slash L distribution report, we probably, I'm not a big acronym, I hate acronyms.
Yeah.
So something like that may be a clarification, but what you've put in this report already tells me what I need to know.
Yeah. It's actually, it's a payroll report, and then the type of report is a distribution, and I don't have the ability to change that description. So I could put a cover page on it and say that we issued, you know, so many warrant registers totaling so much money. I get that's an accounting thing, but I don't have any other reports that come out of the system where, except the ones that name individuals and how much they were, they took home, which is not the same thing as saying how much they paid.
Yeah.
So, you know, like, so if someone had a garnishment, that would be reflected in that, and so we would not publish that type of report.
Maybe Scott can help you get the-
Yeah, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to sit down with Wendy, because I'm concerned, I don't want, you know, it's a SA report, you're doing a ton of reports for the board, and now she's the initial word load, so-
No, I'm just thinking, keep it really simple.
So let me see what, see how we can do it quickly and not take a lot of time, and if it is a big burden, then we'll bring it back to you.
Okay. Then we don't need an approval. We'll receive, we'll file item six in the consent calendar.
Why do you think the approval is what Mr. Moser's asking for?
No, he's just asking for a better description.
An explanation of why it's said.
But we pulled an item from the consent calendar. Technically, we don't need to have a motion and a second and a little call for-
Well, maybe we should, because it's in there. That's the only, we could, you know, whenever you're ready, we can-
Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion if you-
I'm going to approve number six.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
That passes unanimously with one director absent. Number seven, compensation reimbursement of expenses.
Yes, thank you again, President Schaefer. This, again, is just a suggestion for better, I think, a presentation in the future. This is nothing new, but I, for some reason, have never commented on this before. This, again, is a very commendable disclosure by the directors, exactly of the expenses that they compensate for each month. And you have a form that you can allow here that gives the meetings you attend, that gives travel expenses, meal expenses, and other expenses. What is confusing to the public is, like, the mileage written down here and the expenses here, and it says it's supposed to be totaled up, but there's one copy of the form, or it's not in the totals, and then you have to shuffle through all of these. And you can find another where these items are paid, and this one is crossed out. And there are five directors, but when the public looks at this, they see ten forms, one for the per meeting expense, and then another one for the mileage, another expensive. Since you have the need for one that has everything here, I would, I see no reason why it's into parts like that. And I would think it could just be consolidated into a single report, all the receipts and so forth after it. So five directors, one for work, so it would seem to me much easier for the public to understand.
Mr. President, there are two separate criteria for the different expense reimbursement. There's one, it's the daily salary, and then the other is expenses, and they, there's different statutes that cover each, and there's probably different components that each that have to be reported.
Yeah, that's, and I think, you know, that's kind of, I've always been ingrained with the fact that once a reimbursement is subject to different regulations, whereas our daily stipend is, and their taxes taken out of that one, whereas a reimbursement is no tax. So that's what we do.
For clarification for Mr. Moser, this is just information, a receivable file as well, because the, what you're looking at is, that's called the expense reimbursement form, is actually what we call a timesheet for them. They give us the meetings they did. And so that ties to the payroll report that they were paid in the previous month, or they're actually, it's the future month. And then the, because they're attending a meeting, they just document their actual travel expenses on there and provide us the receipts, which would then be paid and approved by the board in the warrant register. So it's, there's no, there's no telling of this tying to anything in this of itself. You would have to say, okay, Mr. Director Perry had six meetings, and I could take you to the month's meeting report where he's receiving his stipend and show you that he got paid for six meetings for this. And then the expense report, I could take you to the warrant register after these are approved, so next month, and show you that he got reimbursed for the expenses. But this document in and of itself is not, it's just information to show that they're disclosing everything that they do.
And it's two different checks that are issued.
Yes. I might submit to the district, though, that having the form in here twice, people in the public casually looking at this are going to see the expenses on two different places and think the directors that they undoubtedly paid for them, which I probably not intend to want to create, because I see the mileage, expenses, and stuff here. And then later, I see another page with the same stuff.
I think what's probably more relevant is for the directors to make sure that they don't include both things on each form.
On one form.
One form is just reimbursement, and the other should be just stipend.
Yes, Mr. President, and I spoke without looking at the documents. These are all expense reimbursements, so there are two sets of criteria in the statutory scheme. One is you pay your daily up to six, only up to six meetings at the amount you set, and that is- As Wendy explained, that goes on payroll. This is pure expense reimbursement. I'm not sure why there's two forms unless there's a carryover, but one form doesn't, you know, because there's no limit on expense reimbursement. There's only a limit on how many days-
Right. I do the same form for SDRMA, and it's a little bit of a different format, but it doesn't, doesn't, the one we do for SDRMA doesn't allow us to break down each meeting. It's just you go to three. So I personally like the way, the way we do it on our form, but that's the reasoning, I guess.
At the very least, I would suggest consolidating the ones for a particular director together, rather than having the public discern to different places.
Okay, that makes sense.
And finally, I would thank Director Uden both for continuing to serve the district with compensation rate for meetings and for providing us full written plans at each time.
Thank you. I'll move for approval of number seven. Mr. President, ready? Motion seconded in the discussion. Off of the question, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That carries unanimously with one director absent. All right, let's go to item, scroll to the bar. Item twelve, strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is your second quarter report on your new revised strategic plan for fiscal year 2015 through 2020. And I just wondered, brings the board attention that, yes, this is, we're in a, this is, this report ends on December 31st, that's the second quarter. And so we're six months into the new strategic plan. So you'll see in the report, there's not a lot of greens, not a lot of completions, because we're only six months into the five-year plan. However, you know, we did, we have five goals that have been completed. You'll see five of them are green, but most of them are ongoing phase. As we continue throughout the years, we'll start seeing more progress, but again, this is your second quarter report. I've answered the questions.
Okay. On the first page, you know, we talked about the end of this line.
Yes.
Then how did our chemical, that went through that line, how did that work?
A root control.
The root control?
Yeah.
As far as I know, it worked well. You know, the whole purpose of that is, well, to guarantee that the roots will not go back in a couple of years, so, but we won't need that time, because we're almost about ready, we're actually having a bid over in that project on March 1st, so we'll have it lined here pretty soon.
There are other lines that have the chemical in there that are being tested and monitored. That was just one.
I think I knew that was one of our proffing lines. So we're going to slipline it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Out of curiosity, Rob, have you had a chance to look at any of those lines, those lines that were foamed or whatever?
We're waiting, when we have our next hotspot meeting, Steve will be giving a report on all of that. I saw some notes, but I wanted to see if it was true.
What's your gut feeling?
Some of the chemicals do work.
I had my sewer lateral-
Well, and-
Did it, and they foamed it. I'm not sure it's the same product, but it hasn't had a root, it hasn't had a blockage in ten years. They-
And then certainly thereafter, Rootex company announced that Motte-Roo was doing this, and they returned, you know, like, mine was dead in ten years. You cheated.
They did.
They did, they did. Okay, any other questions on the update?
Well, what I'd like to do is, they're grouped in a way that looks like, you know, a lot of them will go on forever.
Like under the CIT, you've got five of them there, and if one of them doesn't get done, it'll never turn, never turn green. So I should get-
Look at it and, if you got five projects, like five CIP projects, you know, that it were set as goals for you, you could break them up and, you know, some of them-
Some of them get done earlier, and so when I and the public look at it, you know, there'll be more greens. I'm getting more greens for the general matter.
The club likes the green colors.
I think the layout of this is pretty good.
Yeah, I think it's really good. Okay, any other questions? Then we'll dive into thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is regarding Project 101, Westside Pump Station Abandonment Project. Recently, Secretary Uden, Director Perry, and myself, and District Attorney Rob Hammer met with OCSD officials to-
What day do we meet with them?
February 10th.
I don't-
The day I did my taxes, yeah. Yeah.
I need to put that on my, I need to put that on my fifth impression, too. I need to do it.
Yes, it was February 10th. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to hit your taxes, Dave? Thank you, thank you.
Lucky outlook.
So the purpose of the meeting was to go over their findings of their flow monitoring analysis of the Fairview trunk. So we had a very good meeting. I think the bottom line is that the flow, the current flow for the trunk is, for the pipeline, the pipe is adequate for the flow, even with all the new development that's projected through 2040. The issue that OCSD had concerns with was wet weather flow. There are concerns that if we had seen a storm, like a ten-year storm, the pipeline would not be able to accommodate the wet, the wet weather flow. However, the issue, and they also recognize this, is that data they were using is very old data. It's 2006 data, and that's, because that was the last time Orange County had significant rainfall. In fact, the flow of the data they were using was January 2005, and as I went back in Orange County's website to find out historical rain data, that was one of the wettest months we've had in recorded history. We had over seven inches of rain that month. We've never seen that. I mean, I think we've never seen it one month since that it had that much rain.
Usually a fourteen a year.
You know, yeah, so we've seen seven inches.
Seven inches in a long half.
So, and they also recognized that they didn't take into consideration all the plugging ceilings we've done. You know, we said, well, that's going to have some kind of impact. They knew that, they know that, but because they had old data, there's really no way to determine how effective the plugging ceiling. So, so the bottom line is that they do still support Project 101. In fact, instead, they believe instead of upsizing the trunk, they recommend reducing inflow.
This is the Fairview pump.
Yeah, they're trying to reduce the inflow. So they still believe in the project, and they still want to proceed with the project. What they recommend as far as, or we came to a conclusion, to agreement, as far as trying to reduce the inflow is identified on page two of your stack report, there was four errors we all agree that we should look at how to reduce inflow. The first is, OCSD is going to continue monitoring the flow of Fairview trunk. Hopefully, given this next month or so, we'll get a significant rainfall, and then they can capture some more accurate data. So they're still having, they're still trying to keep the flow monitors in the Fairview trunk. The second is, is that from their old data, they're going to, they're going to try to pinpoint at troubled areas and give that information to us, so then we can go and try to troubleshoot those areas and maybe do some smoke testing to find out if there's any illegal connections. So that would be very helpful to us. Also, on Monday, February 29th is when Profine is going to begin the system-wide CCTV in our whole system, so we're hoping the latest CCTV can help us find if there's any deficiencies in our systems. And then fourth, and I think everyone else agrees, that inflow is coming from the fairgrounds. And so we identified some areas, and we can reach out to the fairgrounds and offer assistance to reduce the inflow. So that's the plan of attack, to reduce the inflow. The next step is, OCSD was going to talk to some concerned citizens, share them, share with them the data, share with them their position, and then next, they're going to meet with the city of Newport Beach, and again, share with them the analysis and finalize their negotiations to sign a three-party agreement. And OCSD will sign the agreement. My recommendation is, once that, that recommendation is fully executed by all three parties, then we'll proceed with the design.
Is any thought or consideration given to the developmental center and its future? Fairview Developmental Center, does that go into the same line?
No.
It doesn't.
It actually goes into harbor.
Harbor, yeah. Okay. Because that's potentially going to be huge development, but if it goes into harbor, that is, I was thinking of letting it be. Okay.
Do you-
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Where are they going to start the videotaping at?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Okay.
I mean, we're only going to do half the system next year, and so what I would ask to check what's due-
Who are we doing this?
Yes.
Coordinated so that we do get that, if in fact, that's an issue.
Do you say doing this area would be at the top or low?
In the first year. In the first-
It's a real good idea.
If in fact-
My second comment was, how fast we get information on them if we have to have repairs done.
Thank you. There is infiltration of, called a gusher, which water is pouring in like a hose. We get a phone call if they run into that. We ran into two of those. Last time, we did a system from 2006 to 2009, and we repaired them. Probably within two weeks of finding them. So we don't think we have any more of those, but if we do, we'll also get a phone call if they run into a leak.
Okay, that's what I was explaining for you.
They let us know, and then we react accordingly.
Okay, good. Good question.
Yeah. And Rob said, when we were discussing with them, were CCTV, you did before during the drought, and we heard during the drought this time?
And the, the study, let's see, the original, the original study, Orange County Sand District Study, found some infiltration and some in-
Concerns in our area. And whether that, this water, you know, got drained into the system and isn't there when they're looking. And there's nowhere to go.
Not microphone, soon as we find you three at five, we want to get hot on.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
The concerned cit, they met with the concerned citizens. I was at the board meeting last night and talked to Rob Thompson and-
Humphrey and Nelson are paying us.
So they've never been there?
Yeah, they, they were there. I'm doing some-
Well, they never were there. They never were there.
But Rob's, Rob's comment was-
Was just the opposite of what I thought, that Nelson is a shield for Humphrey. I was, no, no, that's what Rob's-
That's what Rob, that's what, that's what he interpreted the congressman to be. And, you know, I would have thought just the opposite.
Kevin's on a shelf. But I'm glad it happened.
Well, they met with him. They could talk until they're blue in face, like Jim said.
Okay, any other questions for Scott on that?
And when we've died of 14, the amendment to the waste disposal agreement? It's just the standard offer, offering use that you adopt the resolution after you approved the ordinance.
We'll move to approval of the resolution.
Before we call for a motion, Mr. Moser, you indicated a-
Okay. Sorry. No, no, it's okay.
Isn't this, we had approved this before, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is, I'm sorry, I got, this is, this is, this is different, I'm just, this is the waste disposal agreement with the county. They just wanted us, they, we approved it before, they want us to prove it again because the dates have changed. So all, all the organizations are on board now, so-
Even Irvine?
Yes, Irvine, Irvine. Yeah, Sabre County, Charlotte, Irvine were the holdouts, and they're all coming to the terms. In fact, Irvine has approved their agreement.
This is just the final, the final, so we had approved it-
Right.
To get on the list, and now-
Because dates have changed, they had to change the dates, and I think I, I think I've highlighted what the changes were from the original agreement to the-
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, President Schaefer. Hi. Hi, maybe misunderstanding this item, but my understanding of it is that the county has discovered it has more landfill capacity than it had projected at some time in the past. And I would think the reaction to that would be great relief that we weren't going to have to find a new landfill site for a longer time than we previously anticipated we might. Instead, the reaction seems to be that we should encourage and continue people from outside Orange County to come here, pay us, to dump their trash in our landfill. That seems to me like a very short- That seems to me like a very short-sighted thing to be doing. And I read the staff report carefully. I read this from Newport Beach City Council on their consent calendar. The only justification I can see to find for this is if the money we generate by doing this will be used for many fine things that we can do. However, I don't see that as justification because it seems to me the purpose of the landfill is to hold our own trash as long as we can because the little impact is possible on our own landscape. It's not a profit-generating thing. If you wanted to generate profit, you could probably find somebody who would come here and pay us to compost all our trees or to mow down our mountains and turn them into gravel. But I don't think we would particularly want to do that. So, absent a clear explanation of why it's in the public's interest to allow others to degrade our own landscape, I just don't understand why agencies at all.
Well, initially, it was because of the bankruptcy.
Yeah, to pay off the.
That bailed our rear ends out of, you know, bankruptcy, but that's gone.
Yes, I don't understand the logic. It seems to me very short-sighted. And I would hope that you would not sign on to it.
That's the Waste Management Board and the supervisors that determined that, am I right?
Yes, yes, and to address Mr. Moser's argument, advocating that we don't sign it. If we don't sign it, then the whole deal falls through and no one, no one gets a part of the agreement. So, you want to be the bad guys, you can do that.
Well, it's a matter of helping keep the cost, the unit cost for that.
Landfill operation down. And if we don't import trash, we will pay one way or the other.
They're subsidizing our trash. But they did raise the rate, so, didn't they?
Yeah.
They're raising every year.
But they might have to be raised.
Yeah. When we're seventy-five percent convergent, it's going to lower our rate there, but we'll be paying more to the other.
Okay.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Sorry, yes, I do need action on this one. I'll move for approval to adopt press motion two oh one six dash eight seventy-eight and approve.
I'll take it. We have a motion and a second and yet another suggestion. I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries four to zero with one director absent.
Your comments are well taken, though.
Yeah, they are.
You know, but the answer is, it's subsidizing our efforts.
Like forty years from now, we may be looking for everybody else. Maybe we'll be a hundred percent convergent by then.
That's our goal.
That's our goal.
That's right. Okay, engineers' reports? Rob?
Thank you, Mr. President and board members on the project status report. We have one completed capital improvement project, next item seventeen. We have two others under construction, that's the twenty-third pump station generator and raising the second half of manholes or adjusting them and making sure there's no traffic happening. So, those two are under construction. We have three projects out to bid, bid opening is next Tuesday. So, a lot going on. I mean, happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. I know there's like four hundred-plus manholes that they work now. Will they complete that this year?
Well, there's actually forty some there. So, there's much better. So, that'll be done, yeah, it'll be done.
Wendy, are we, well, Scott, maybe, are we having a discussion on CIP projects in the next study session or?
Yes, yes, I believe, yes, we are, yes.
And the intent?
Is to prioritize the future CIP projects?
Yeah, just again, give me an updated current project we're working on and what the future projects are in the head and see if that, in the forward direction, if that's the right direction we want to go.
Any other questions?
Our purchase of the building might have an impact on where we do CIP too, wouldn't it?
Well, I think that's still the reason why you're going to lease purchasing, so it won't have a lesser impact. So, you know, at two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty, two thousand dollars a year, sure, it'll have some impact, but it'll be a minor impact. I don't, with the issue of the impact, that's where we have to come back, is Project 101. You know, how much money you want to put on that, gives me nearly about seven, seven million dollars for that. So, that's, that's the project's going to have impact on other CIP projects.
Seven, you're going to have to be a million dollars just picking out for more?
Yes, yes, and we'll show that in our place session more.
That's a new estimate.
You're right, there was forty-three manholes, I just, this right.
You put your glasses on.
Want to borrow mine?
I read it.
Want to borrow mine? Any other questions for Rob?
No.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Item fifteen, consult the business report. There are three projects here that I am the anchor of record. The first one, there's really not any sewer work there. Drainage project, flooding of buildings going on that I am assisting on. The other two are both four-unit residential development projects in the city. And we set up in place a secondary system to check the plants and inspect the work and take care of the business. So, that's been working very well. That'd be very helpful.
Good, thanks, Rob. Seventeen?
Thank you. This one does require action. We have completed, and I'd like to clarify that this is the core work of the station. Once we committed to keeping it to save that million dollars, we had to rush in and take off the Band-Aids and rubber bands because that's what we had, we kept thinking it would be abandoned. We were waiting to replace the most important things, the pumps, the bases, some of the piping valves. But that work's been done. There will be a little electrical work in future and way down the road, maybe we'll replace the force main. But for now, we're in good shape.
And you replaced the cabinets and things, electrical cabinets?
The electrical cabinet is, that'll be, that's where that, as well as the aesthetics of the cabinet.
What's the cost for the force main replacement?
Well, first of all, it's very short. It actually, it's up the hill right next to somebody, it'll be a hundred feet. It might be lineable. We haven't done an assessment of it yet, so don't really have a cost. But even if it were, putting in a new one, it's pretty much in the dirt and grass, so it would not be that. So, you recommend passing on items one, two, or three?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Send one little item discussion to the clerk. One of the things I sign is at the very end, did I verify that I'm the president of the board? I don't think I've ever seen this before, have I?
You have.
Okay. Then I just want to make sure.
We just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure I knew who I was, you know? At times I do forget, but I'm just, just making sure.
Good question.
There's a question, Alan, it's okay to make that same motion with both one and two at the same time or not?
I think they should be two separate motions.
Okay, then we'll amend that to, I'll draw my first, we'll just make this for just the first one, Bob.
Okay, yes.
No, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so then I'll call for the question on item one, accept the improvements, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously four to nothing with one director absent. Move item two. Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously four to zero with one director absent. Thank you, Rob. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Request that this item be continued until such time as the improvements for the new building are determined.
Okay, any discussion on that?
What's your timetable on that, Scott? When will we be discussing this, for the study session?
We don't want to wait for that. I think we're going to do it as a special meeting. We're going to try to do a special meeting. So, we're meeting Monday with a consultant to get the ball rolling and then soon we get that known as well. We'll try to schedule a special meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we have to do that.
Or do you want? Absolutely. Okay. Then do we have a motion to continue now?
Move for continuing now.
Second.
Another discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, continuation passes four to zero with one director absent. Attorneys' report?
I have nothing for you tonight, Mr. President.
What the meetings? Jim?
Well, we talked about the meeting we had with, you know, Project 101. I wasn't at the regular meeting, but maybe Bob can.
You were at the OCSD board meeting.
They dealt with giving approval for the budget calendar. Had a finance meeting, which is a separate corporation to deal with. We adjourned to the finance committee meeting. And then came back, and basically just to approve the minutes. I think it's a procedural matter that they have to have the meeting period.
I have, there were a lot of small projects. Almost every committee was pretty busy. They still haven't determined.
Lafco hasn't determined who will take care of the east Orange County sewer lines or the Tustin lines. There are two agents. And Irvine Ranch Water District.
I thought they gave it to Irvine.
Oh, Lafco?
Lafco's, I think Lafco's.
Oh, no, not Lafco, huh?
It's still before Lafco.
No, no, it was.
Harbor approved it through line. Oh, okay.
I think what they approved was paying east Orange County what they had involved in the project, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But you are, I think there was more.
But anyway, so Lafco still has to make the approval.
Yeah, I knew that, but I mean, but they went through our hurdle.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, every ISOC executive committee, either Fissler or.
John Withers.
John Withers, they always mention it and they always say they're waiting on something before Lafco's going to do anything.
County may have approved it, but Lafco still has to, there's still paperwork they have to do.
OCSD's giving it to Irvine.
Yeah, yeah, we gave it the blessing, yeah. I know the people from North Orange County walked out of the meeting pretty pissed off.
Anyway, that's most of what I wanted to tell you. It was a pretty quick meeting.
No further discussion.
Yeah, we did not have a meeting this morning.
ISOC executive committee meeting. Couple of things that are on the table for us is, we haven't done an audit for ISOC for quite some time. And so, we're in the process of getting an audit done. One of the problems we ran into is our treasurer, of course, had a house fire a while back, about a year or two back. And records were kept with her instead of that.
Oh, John.
Orange County Water District.
Pendigan?
And she's not very mechanic. What's that?
Excuse me, on top of the sewer problem, you mean?
That's a rental property. This is at her home she had a fight. So, we're working on getting an audit done. It's become a little more complicated than I envisioned. The other item we continue to hash out is speakers. It's the job of the first vice president to get speakers for our quarterly meetings. Unfortunately, our first vice president doesn't take that responsibility seriously, so we struggle with trying to get speakers for our quarterly meetings, so.
And the president meets with him often and?
Yeah, we talk quite often. And so, I took it upon myself to form an ad hoc committee of three volunteers to get speakers. And that met with some resistance from a couple of people, but someone's got to do it. So, unfortunately, I'm going to miss the executive committee meeting next Tuesday. So, if you happen to be in town, you can go to that.
Okay. What was Mike doing last week?
You know, I've got somebody who is a professional speaker, who travels the country.
I have just about any business, give me the contact, my best.
I mean, he'd be very fascinating.
We had a couple of those suggestions. We had a couple of suggestions.
Yeah, I think we're going to, you know, at the last quarterly meeting, of course, we have the county CEO. I thought he did a great job. I thought he was really informative. That's the kind of stuff that goes over.
Van jury, and you never did the van jury before.
Well, the grand jury is tough because it changes, you know? There's an adversarial thing supposedly there. We had a speaker, I've, a couple of days I've been in Indian Wells, somebody had to do it. At the Public, the Public Risk Management Authority is what it is. And they're risk managers from all over the country at the same. We had a speaker, at the first session we had, an investigator and attorney who talked about how to tell if someone's lying. The title of the topic was, "Everybody Lies." And they spent a little over an hour talking about how to pick up, how to tell someone's lying. And that would be a great topic to take, although a bunch of politicians in the room might accept it very well.
Poker players would enjoy it.
Poker players would really enjoy it. But that's really it for ISOC.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We had talked about a month ago about a speaker that I might be able to bring to circle back with our banker. And he connected me with the guy. And so, I'm going to reach out to him and if it's okay, I can share his information with you.
Just give him my contact information, Mark, that's perfectly fine. I remember we did talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, interesting guy. The guy used to be in the Secret Service under a few different administrations and now has his own firm doing cybersecurity. And he's focusing on water districts and how their potential to being cyber threats. So.
Oh, yeah, that.
That'd be perfect.
Oh, yeah.
And special districts. Yeah, we had him in SDRMA too. Scary stuff. That'd be great, that'd be really good.
Pick a name and soon you have your face full out, soon you have everything about.
That one speaker is at one conference, he actually hacked into CSDA.
Well, we, we had him in.
Right there, right there in front of God, everybody.
Well, we had him at an SDRMA Claims Day and then we referred him over to CSDA. He actually took himself or his computer and he would hack into these security systems, like people, you know how they control their alarms and their lights and everything on there? And he hacked into these people and he had it up on the computer and he'd say, okay, this address in Poughkeepsie, New York, or wherever. And he'd push a button, their lights are now going off and on and they don't know who's doing, I mean, it's scary, scary stuff.
Yeah, really.
But then they can't figure out how to get into an iPhone, so.
And we suggest today, we suggest.
Just one, not yours.
Rick Hymer? He said to live on Capri.
Did you guys move on to Capri?
We just closed escrow.
Oh, really?
That's where the best reach across the bank. Really, it really is.
Yeah, it does every year.
I was going to say, not the way, don't say it.
No, they don't, because they don't go down to Capri.
Director Schaefer's not here to talk about CSDA, but I will throw in, I'm in the education committee for CSDA. And we had a conference call two weeks ago for the annual conference. And I'm part of the subcommittee that picks the speakers that go, aren't you glad? And what Megan from CSDA did is she sent us a whole list of, I don't know, there were like twenty different people, speakers. And we were supposed to review each one and watch their YouTube's and stuff. And then we voted, or we gave our recommendations to the CSDA staff that day on a conference call on this list of people. And there were two of us that picked one speaker in particular that probably won't go over, but it's Bill Walton, former basketball player. it's Bill Walton, former basketball player. Um, I don't, I'm not sure if I watched the same videos and stuff that some of these other people on that committee did, but I tried to think of all of you guys. Who you'd wanna hear, not.
We talked about John Wooden stuff, you know.
Walton, I think Walton was an outstanding speaker. They had some guy that was a former Navy SEAL or participated in, uh, killing that Bin Laden and I think, I would love to hear something like that, but, um, SDRMA, we had a board meeting earlier in the month. Primary focus was our strategic plan, which will probably disseminate down to all of the districts fairly soon, but the big news is, I'm sure you got the bulletin from SDRMA, no ratings, no rates, and, uh, having a couple of insurance agents on that board, I think, really helps because, you know, we give the, we call it a dividend, but I'm, I forget the term that SDRMA uses, where money goes back through the rates and, uh, Merle and I both are very strong advocates on the board to reward the districts that deserve and our district deserved it, so we should see some relief there too. Okay, good. Did you? Always, always.
As you mentioned, we're paying for your trips.
No, we're not. No, you're not, SDRMA is.
Yeah, who, who do you think funds SDRMA?
Never mind. Uh, um, other meetings qualifying for reimbursement, anybody else have anything? Oh, I did have, well, I'm sorry, one other meeting, um, I did meet with the general manager on the seventeenth, probably the most expensive coffee place in the county, but I paid for my own coffee.
It's all five bucks now, there you go.
Not in my kitchen.
Not in Starbucks.
Yeah, I did, I get a grande. Director Fairman and myself, we've been.
Two, no.
Yes, you're one on one. We had a very productive meeting, I think, and appreciate you taking the time to meet.
He buttered you up.
Well, you should, I'm the fourth president. Any other meetings?
I, I.
Jimmy? Go ahead.
I spoke at this, uh, group down in Mission Viejo, uh, last week and it was about, they wanted to know about the water situation and, but I, but, you know, I brought up a lot of the things we're doing here too and, uh, it was really kinda fun because these people were very interested and pretty knowledgeable, you know, but I went through the groundwater replenishment thing with them and, and how, you know, our district deals with. Aspects of it and it was, uh, I talked to him for about an hour and, you know.
It's amazing, I, I'll be talking to someone, it's amazing how much I know about stuff that I didn't, everybody would know about.
I know, it just comes spewing out of you.
I mean, he's talking about anaerobic digestion and some of the stuff and you go, they'll look at you go, are you serious? You know, so, good. Any other meetings in? All right, then we'll move, we have no old business or new business. Uh, Director Comets, anybody have any?
Only, uh, have, have you made a, um.
We have to build, I just, I just. That's the reason we haven't given a budget schedule. I knew there was a reason.
Well, you notice someone hiding behind your iPad. Does that go through two thousand seventeen? Yes, yes, yes. Um, but at this point, we are going to adjourn to a closed session regarding public employee performance evaluation, uh, general manager and the negotiator meet. So at this point, we will, we're closed session?
And this president is actually two, we're actually going into two different closed sessions and in one, you know, general manager can be part of it if you're gonna speak to him about his evaluation and the part in which you're giving authority to me, your negotiated general manager, you have to step out.
Uh, so for the evaluation, we'll do that first.
Okay.
Are we okay to not come back?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good job.